She's gonna be here in one minute. Here's Toni. All right. It's October 28, 2019. I've got just after 5:30. This is a public meeting of the school board of the West Bend Joint School District, number one. More than 24 hours prior to this meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in each school building, the entrance doors at the Education Service Center, and of the West Bend Community Memorial Library. Copy was also sent to the Daily News, WVKV, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. Deb, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted? Great. We do recognize a quorum tonight. Paul Fisher is on the line with us on the phone. I've got a mic next to the phone, so Paul, please speak up. We can hear you loud and clear. And why don't we stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we should stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with which we convene justice for all.
We've got a packed agenda tonight. Hopefully, the board has had a chance to review their board packet. All votes that we take tonight need to be roll call votes because that's what our policy states when we have someone calling in over the phone. So any vote that we take, I'm gonna go ahead and start with Paul on the phone, and then we'll have Chris, Toni, myself, and just down the line doing votes. I move to approve tonight's agenda. Any questions, comments on the agenda? I do have a question. I think I'm gonna direct this to Deb. A board member contacted me earlier this week asking about our high school students who are our high school liaison students. Are they being identified and hopefully coming in our next couple of board meetings?
High school principals, and we will have them here. Their first meeting will be December 9.
Great. Look forward to that. All right, that was our comments question, so we need to vote on our agenda. Paul?
Aye. Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. We have our agenda. First thing tonight is public participation, and I do have Casey Lats here from Jackson. And Casey, you're up. As you come to the mic, I'll just kinda summarize our public participation policy. You've got three minutes to address the board. Anyone from living within our school district, parents of children in our district, and employees can address the board. And we typically don't engage in back and forth, but it's your time to address the board and our time to listen. So go ahead.
My name's Casey Lats. I've been a village resident since 1976. Been involved with Jackson, the politics and everything that goes on in Jackson since 1978. Reading what the task force came up with, I had to step back, take a deep breath, let my blood pressure go down, as I'd been fighting for over 20 years for our new school. I then sent a letter to an email to John Walther, our village administrator, asking him to send these questions that I have of our board, what's going to happen. The questions that I have is how will this affect realtors and business owners and property owners if something like this goes through? Being a business owner, I know how it's gonna affect me. Being a property owner and owning several properties in the village of Jackson, much have to do with children and occupancy, that will affect me. And if you talk to a realtor, they will let you know that if our school goes away in the village of Jackson, they're gonna have a hard time selling certain properties. And I wanna know how this is gonna affect some of the parents. They already have schedules. They walk their children to school, talked to several of them. They don't wanna be busing their kindergartner, their first grade, their second grader to West Bend. There's no need for that. We have a beautiful school right where everybody can get to. We don't need to be busing our children to West Bend. The village has just okayed several new condos and apartment buildings, again, for families. Now, if this all goes away, our school goes away, what's gonna happen to the village? Are you gonna kill the village? Because we will not be able to get, we won't be able to grow anymore. And I'm sure the city of West Bend likes growth. Everybody likes growth. And if you should, again, take away our school, this is gonna have an effect on a lot of residents in the village, in the town, Polk, and the surrounding areas. So I am asking you to please consider all the questions that I've posed to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lats. Anybody else wishing to address the board tonight? If not, we will move on to our consent agenda, which has dispersments posted to October 28, 2019, Start College Now, and early college credit requests for spring of 2020, and a resignation.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any questions, concerns on the consent agenda? All in favor, we'll start with Paul.
Yep. Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Consent agenda passes. Our action items tonight, we start with the certification of the 1920 tax levy and final budget. I think Andy Sarno's gonna do that.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Superintendent Kirkagard, thank you for the opportunity to present the levy, the mill rate. So the levy, which is a dollar amount, the mill rate, which is a taxation rate or a percentage, and then an updated budget, which is new information since the initial approval back in June. We will be, I will be sharing all of this information. There's an executive summary. There are three motions included in that document for your consideration, based on the information that I have. Discussion tonight, questions, answers. But I have a presentation, and then I'm gonna jump into a second document. I will quickly review the budget, but very, very similar to what was proposed back in June. There were some updates, additional information, very current as well. And again, we had some consistency between June, September, and then now, pretty consistent numbers that we'll be moving forward with upon your approval. But this truly is the culmination of that activity. So we're gonna be reviewing a little bit of the September information, what was presented at that point, what's changed since that annual budget hearing, literally October 15th, which was last Monday, excuse me, the prior Monday. Lot of new information becomes available from the state as well as the Department of Public Instruction. Just a little bit of the impact, what's now going on due to those changes, 'cause there are a couple of things that we do need to discuss this evening. And then as well, as I've mentioned, we have the levy, which is a dollar amount, mill rate, which is a percentage, the taxation rate, and then the budget. It's wrapped into one motion for your consideration. This is what I've always done. If you would like to break it out, certainly you're prerogative to do so. I think I've captured everything. We can make some adjustments to that as well. So back in September, we had an estimated property value growth. Why this is important is it's the numerator on our tax rate, but also it determines how property rich or poor we are, which is really what determines how much money we get from the state. It was estimated to increase by 7.1 percent. At that point in time as well, we estimated that we have 125 fewer FTE pupils in our membership. Why that's important is those are the students that we're able to count within that membership for our revenue purposes. We did allow for a state statute of $300 increase in the revenue limit per FTE. So that was at that point in time. We estimated our private school voucher levy to be fairly flat, and I do have a graph, and I'll show a little bit more information about this, but flat at about $940,000. It only began about four years ago, and each year it's almost doubled. So we're gonna be talking about that a little bit additionally, 'cause it has, that is one of the numbers that has changed. The last three years, as well as with this proposed budget, we were talking about defeesing debt, levying for the money now, holding it in an interest-bearing account, and then when we do have the ability to pay that debt off, that we would be able to utilize those monies in response to the community, being fiscally responsible, and getting rid of that debt as quickly as possible. State estimate of $31.1 million, again, how much money we receive from the state. And then as well, then that last piece is, what's our taxation rate based on all of that? We're discussing holding the mill rate flat at $7.97. Again, I have a little bit of information a little bit above and beyond that. So what is new, what came in new here over the last couple of weeks? Baird was the ones that shared, RW Baird, shared the 7.1 percent, and they nailed it. That held true, is within several hundred thousand dollars, actually. So very happy with that. Our membership decline was actually 230 FTE less, so we had 105 fewer students than we predicted back in September. And we did talk about it at that point in time as well. The revenue allowance, that's accurate. That was a part of state statute. It was allowable because we're a low-spending district, so it was a portion between all of what districts were able to have access to, including a little bit of additional monies since we're a low-spending district.
Andy, on there, you say yet accurate. Do you anticipate a change there? Or like, that will hold true?
That's holding true. These are all final numbers tonight. Unless you make a motion to amend something that's included, these are accurate numbers. Private school voucher levy, again, it was approximately $850,000, $950,000. We're now looking at a private school voucher levy, and this is for those families that qualify for schools who participate in this program. It's now increased up to $1.85 million. So that's a considerable increase. That's something, please.
Can you remind everyone what it was last year and the year before?
Yep, and I will share that in just one moment. Yep, thank you.
All right, one more question. Can you also, maybe for those that aren't as familiar, and maybe this is a Don question, maybe just give a little background on, maybe that's in your slides later, like, when did the vouchers start, and then, you know, what they're used for, and how you, you know, families qualify, et cetera?
Yep, absolutely. I'll speak about that in a moment. Or if Don would like to, I'd be more than happy to. Okay. We do have, at this point in time, still, and this is one of the variables, a $3.15 million defees debt. It is still proposed, but it's up for discussion this evening, please. State aid estimate, we do have an additional $400,000 that came in, so that's a good thing. And we are, at this point in time, if you take all of that new information, primarily because of the increase in the vouchers, a proposed increase in the mill rate or the taxation rate from $7.97 to $8.12.5 cents. That's driven primarily because of, fully because of the vouchers. Okay? Represents about a 1.88 percent increase in the mill rate. So let's talk about this a little bit. 2015-16 was the first year upon which vouchers statewide, it previously been seen in Milwaukee, but 2015-16, it went statewide. At that point in time, we had just under $300,000. It's for families that qualify. It's an income, and I think Superintendent Kirkagard, we spoke, it's around $75,000 for a household income, to be able to qualify for a voucher for your child or your children to attend a participating school. A couple of our Catholic schools do not participate. A couple of our Lutheran schools do. That number then increased in 1617 to $425,000, held fairly flat in 2017-18, $50,000 increase. And then last year, it almost doubled to $940,000. And then right now, where it stands, and this is information that we received from the Department of Public Instruction, they receive all of the information, much like our Third Friday Count. The voucher schools have one of those as well. We received the information October 15th, $1.85 million for that, for all of those students now that have qualified and are utilizing a voucher. This is something where the district does not see the money. We're expected to levy per state statute for it, and where it is all property, tax-paid money, the state then, through the Department of Public Instruction, essentially withheld, withhold some of our aid, and the money then is paid to the private schools. So it's a little bit interesting accounting, in a sense.
So a couple of questions, yeah. So I mean, I know when students choice out, we have a little more information on those students that we can potentially contact and make some kind of connection with to kinda get the answers. This information, we don't even have a total number of students that are doing this. We're estimating, correct, based on the amount, or?
We're not estimating. This dollar amount is provided by the Department of Public Instruction. There are two different rates for elementary and secondary, but we're just given a dollar amount. So we don't have number of students, who's at the elementary, who's at the high school, or middle schools. There's not any additional information, no names exchanged.
We don't even know which schools they're going to or anything. So really, it's really kind of odd that, you know, we're given such little information, but yet expected to levy and cover those costs.
The money goes directly to the schools from the Department of Public Instruction. And again, they have a Third Friday Count. They're made in two different payments. There's one in the fall, one in the spring. And if the students are attending the school at either point in time, the school is reimbursed for half of the amount for those two different pay periods.
Are you assuming that if the money increased by double, schools program and change the dollars since the school, or more schools apply more students qualified?
At this point in time, we're not aware of any additional schools who've qualified. We believe that there's more students who are participating in this option.
I think statewide, it was about 325 million, 350 million. So it's significantly larger number than what the state had anticipated. I don't know if it was quite 350, but it was close to $350 million that the state is levying local districts for the voucher system. And, you know, so the West Bend district, the members of the school board, you know, you can make some other adjustments. You can't make an adjustment to this one. This is truly set for you by the state of Wisconsin. You have to assess it. You don't collect the dollars. It goes right to, I mean, we collect the dollars. We don't get the dollars. It goes right to the state, and the state distributes them to the private schools. And so you truly, this is outside of your control. I would anticipate, and not saying it's a bad program, it's just, it's a program that you have no control over. The control comes from the legislature and the body in Madison. And I think, based on the DPI numbers, they're suggesting that they didn't anticipate that it was gonna grow to the point of $350 million this year. And so I don't know if everybody had doubles the way we had doubles, but it significantly increased from last year to this year.
So that might answer my question, and I'm not sure which one of you this is a question for, but to a layperson, when you look at that and you see the number doubled, it could suggest, well, the number of students, there was a mass exodus of some sort of students between the two years from the district to these other schools, but it sounds like it might actually be a combination of more people who already were in those schools, were, are taking advantage of it, not so much a signal of some sort of mass exodus.
We really did not anticipate quite such an increase, obviously, when we did the preliminary budget. Last year, it went up from $477 to $940 because there were a couple of schools that accessed the voucher for the first time, for what we were told, okay? We aren't aware of any schools that are accessing it for the first time. And so whether they have more students who are coming, whether they're doing a better job of informing the students who are there that if you would like to apply for the voucher, 'cause you don't have to apply for the voucher, but the guidelines are pretty high. I think Andy said they're about that $75,000 range. And so I don't know what it costs to go to a private school, a Prokill school, but if it costs $10,000 for enrollment, and you're getting $9,000 from the state, now it's $1,000 to go to the private school, not 10. Or if it costs $9,000, it truly is free appropriate education to a private school rather than to a public school. And if it costs 15, you're still paying 6, but your, half of it is being paid for by the state and local tax dollars.
Are there any other limitations besides the income limit? Like, it's their X number vouchers per school given out, and then also is there, like, a number of schools that can participate?
At this point in time, no. And so at this point in time, it truly is a decision that the legislature, if they want to address it, they're gonna have to do the addressing. And so that if there are 25 more schools that choose to participate in our area that haven't, then that's the case. If there are 200 more students that apply next year than they did this year, then that, that will increase. That next year's number might be 3,600,000 rather than 1,800,000. And you, as a school board, have no authorization to change that. That is strictly, comes down from Madison to us, and it's just a directive. Andy, is that pretty accurate?
That's accurate.
Another question for you, when we're talking about eligibility. So refresh our minds. If this is a $75,000 threshold to qualify for the voucher program, how does free and reduced lunch compare to that?
Free and reduced is approximately, it depends on household size, other sources of income and whatnot, but it's approximately half of that amount.
So to qualify for free and reduced lunch, I can make approximately $35,000. But to qualify to go to a private school paid for by the taxpayers, I can make $75,000?
The $75,000 is for a family of four.
Yes.
A family of three, it might be $60,000. A family of two, it might be $50,000. So it does depend on how big your family is.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt. I don't know if you had-
No, that answered my question.
Thank you.
I have more of a comment. I'm trying to understand this in my own mind, and it seems like I can't think of a better word than pass-through cost, that it's really a legislature's foreign law, that we had nothing to do with setting. This is a state legislature decision. This is a state senator in the Assembly, an examiner, passing a law that requires disfunding. And it's more like a pass, so I'm looking for a term, but it's a pass-through cost, and we have to tax because we're one of the only two taxing authorities outside of the city with the property tax, and we have to pass through this tax.
And so, just a, one thing we wanna make sure it's clear is that it doesn't impact your bottom-line ability to tax at a certain level. And so that this .35 mils is above and beyond what we can tax locally. So it's not, you're not losing your dollars that we would tax for private schools, okay? If you could tax 32 million normally, you can still tax 32 million, okay? What this does is says that rather than 32 million, it's 33,800,000. And so that it's above and beyond our quota as far as how much we can tax. It still comes out of your tax bill, and you don't have any say in that. You do have a say in the $32 million part, if that's what it is, or the 34, but you don't have any say in this. But just wanna make sure people understand that this isn't being subtracted from our maximum. This is above and beyond our maximum. Is that-
That's accurate. Yep. It does not impact our bottom line.
It does yours as a taxpayer, but not the district's bottom line for tax, for revenue.
Column on the furthest right talks about the impact of the mill rate. So again, the levy or the dollar amount, which is, again, flowed through, and it doesn't even pass through us, but it does impact the levy as opposed to then the mill rate for the vouchers. So we are up to 35 cents on the mill rate as a result of this at this point in time. Any other questions on this topic? I'm gonna skip over now to the defeasance.
Are we given any indication of how many potential students could in the future qualify? Okay, so this, there's no-
We could double again next year.
Full disclosure, what I thought would happen, why I believed we'd hold pretty flat with that $940,000 is, well, we expanded a couple of schools last year, and now we might have already some graduates, and they might be going away. We might have some new kindergarteners that qualify. But generally speaking, have we leveled out with this? And so that is one of the big questions is, what will happen, not just with this, or what has happened with this year, but what is going to then happen with future years? And that's one of those things that it's uncertain at this point in time. We can try to estimate and calculate, and we can communicate and ask folks, but we really don't know until October 15th of every year. We can be cautious, and we can estimate higher and make sure that we cover ourselves and understand what that means. So that's what I'd recommend in future years. Great question. The defeasance, so 15-16, again, the year that the vouchers started, we did not defees any debt. We have, over the last three years, defeesed $5.9 million, and that's the exact dollar amounts listed, and I've shared that information in the past. And again, the mill rate associated with that defeasance, based on those property values at that point in time. Initially, for 2019-20, we were talking about $3.15 million, representing about 60 cents. It is a decrease in the mill rate because our property values increased by 7 percent. At this point in time, still a recommendation, again, based on your approval and the discussion that we'll have in a couple moments, to balance out at the $7.97, or somewhere in between what the mill rate would be with the new voucher amount, we would be adjusting this dollar amount potentially. So what is that impact on the mill rate? As we look, we've been as high back in 15-16, $8.76, still well below the state average, and I believe that was even significantly below the state average at that point in time. But at that point, we had a 15 cent increase that year. We did have three consecutive years where the mill rate dropped by 11 cents, 50 cents, and 18 cents. Last year, or, excuse me, that was last year, again, we had a decrease in the mill rate initially, back in June, as well as in September, we had a proposed, we were estimating at that point in time, a flat mill rate of $7.97. And if all of the information that we've talked about, the full voucher, the full defeasance, it would cause the mill rate to go to $8.12, still 3 cents less than it was back in 17-18, but it would be approximately a 2 percent increase in the mill rate based on our initial projections.
If the district average mill rate going up, it would be $9.40, the average mill rate that a school district would pay out of 420 school districts in the state. So we're still well below on that, as we pointed out. But I would assume if this is causing our district to look at it, or if other districts to look at its mill rate, it might go up from 9.40 to something.
Yep. So Erin was kind enough this morning to shoot an email. I hope it's okay to share, but she said, hey, what's going on with some other school districts? And my quick answer, because this is one of my, there's so many variables that are going into this, is how many students do they have? What just happened with referendums? What's going on with their vouchers? So there's many, many school districts. I wager to guess there's over 200 of these meetings across the state tonight, where school districts are setting the levy and the mill rate and the final budget. But I did call a few, and Slinger's actually dropped by about 15 cents. But she put an asterisk next to it and said, by the way, we're talking about defeesing this spring for future years because we don't want our mill rate to drop anymore. So there are school districts. Cedarburg was able to afford a referendum without an increase because their property values went up, but they also had a lot of debt dropping off at that point in time. So it was timed where they were able to do that without, but they also indicated their vouchers doubled. So there's a lot of variables that go into all this. So it's really hard to say what's going to happen, but it's, do you know what I mean?
Kurt, I believe, and I don't have a crystal ball either, based on the statewide increase in assessed valuation, that I think the mill rate will probably drop a little bit statewide, okay? Depends on how much they're defeesing, if they are at all, how much they're opt out, if they have an operating referendum, and those other kind of things. But I would be surprised if the mill rate didn't drop just a little bit based on the increase in assessed valuation, because not everybody is impacted with vouchers as much as southeastern Wisconsin, okay? There aren't the number of vouchers in the northwest that there are here. There aren't the number of vouchers in other areas. Southeast Wisconsin has significantly more parochial private schools than most areas. And so we have a potential for a larger impact. And in other schools, just like Andy said, that Cedarburg isn't, or no, excuse me, Slinger isn't at this point in time, and I don't wanna speak for them 'cause I don't know for sure, but not necessarily defeesing any of their debt. And so they can drop it based on the mill levy going, the assessed valuation going up, the mill levy going down. When you start defeesing it, then you kinda level off that mill levy a little bit.
This is a graphical representation. This was in the shell, what I call the shell at the annual meeting. What I've now added is we still have the orange column. $7.97 is a proposal. That would be with the full defeasance, no vouchers. We have the vouchers. So that would be decreasing the defeasance by about $800,000. So that would be decreasing the defeasance by about eight hundred thousand dollars. The green bar is if the full vouchers and the full defeasance, the full three point one five million dollars was approved. It would increase to eight dollars and twelve cents. And then the orange, cutting it in half, let's call it the middle, eight dollars and five cents. It's about seven, seven, eight cents on each side. And being able to still defuse half of the eight hundred thousand dollars or two point seven million dollars. So again, quantifying exactly what I just shared there is a flat mil rate of seven ninety-seven. Let's call it the increase or the maximum allowable that's been earlier presented, eight dollars and twelve cents, or a mid-range of eight dollars and five cents.
The seven ninety-seven, the top, the flat, that is already budgeting nine hundred and forty thousand for the voucher program.
That's including eight point five five million for the vouchers, but we've decreased the defeasance down from three point one five to two point three five million. So it's decreased by eight hundred thousand dollars to balance out that mil rate.
Will this have some sort of effect on the equation that the state uses for our funding in general?
No, there would, the vouchers nor the defeasance have an impact on the formula for the state aid. That would then impact the taxation rate.
Because isn't there a limit as to how much the mil rate can increase each year for that equation? Okay.
It's up to the districts to be able to-
Excuse me, there is a maximum that we can increase it, but the vouchers and the defeasance are outside of that limit. So you can only go up, you know, you can't raise taxes because you want to increase the maintenance budget. You can't do that, there's a limit to that. But both of these two areas, if you wanted to pay off the entire debt tomorrow and put it in account, you could have a defeasement of twenty million dollars. It might not necessarily be politically acceptable, but you can do that and you collect it and you put it there. So there's no, nothing that prevents that from happening. But those are the only two areas that you can spend above and beyond the limits.
Perfect answer, thank you. Does that answer your question?
So this is outside of that and won't have a negative impact if we make the selection to increase the mil rate now?
Correct.
Okay.
Andy, can I ask, I'm sorry, if I can ask a question about the defeasance? So when I think back to the referendum, at least my perception was that the voters perceive that maybe we have too much debt, maybe we're paying too much interest. If we defuse, that obviously helps in the long term our debt. But the impact of that help depends on the interest rate of the debt, I would imagine. Can you just describe generally the income, the interest rate structure that we have in place with our debt?
Yeah, so we do at this point in time have fairly aggressive interest rates on our existing debt. There is one, one of our interest rates from when we, I forget, I apologize, I forget if it's either Badger or Silverbrook, that's still outstanding for the next ten years, or maybe both. But that's at a smidge higher rate because that was a government issue bond, taxable. So that's at what I'd call a normal, still fairly competitive. However, additionally, above and beyond the referendum debt that we have, we have some non-referendum debt and we are levying for those, but those are what they call qualified zone academy bonds and qualified school construction bonds. Those are governmental programs where they had certain dollar amounts that they issued at unbelievably low interest rates, one, one and a half percent. So some of our debt, and I have broken out in the past, I don't have the dollar amount in my head, I will at some point, but those are very aggressive. But that's a lot of the non-referendum debt. When we did a little bit larger projects than we could afford in one year, we spread those payments out, but we did that through our operational dollars. And those, when we're talking about defeating, it truly is for the referendum debt, for the Silverbrook, the Badger projects that we've done in the past. I'm going to jump over to, and I don't mean, I hope it's okay because we've talked about the levy, which is the dollar amount, we've talked about the mil rate, which is the rate. I'm just going to jump in real quick to talk about the budget. And right after this, I think I'm going to sit down and stand back up. We do have quarter one revenues and expenditures in the aggregate. But our final budget, this was a part of the packet as well, again, very similar. We do have seventeen, eighteen actual activity, two thousand eighteen, nineteen actual activity. The audit is still ongoing, it's near completion. I think these numbers are very, very unlikely to change. But, and then we do have the proposed budget. We have a balanced general fund budget, approximately seventy-three point five million dollars. It accounts for everything that we're aware of at this point in time, anything that we can anticipate. Broken boiler, some large expenditures, things like that. We have a very small contingency, but everything that we're aware of at this point in time. We do have a fund balance. We only utilized, actually, I was very, very surprised, the auditors after they made their final adjustments and accounting for depreciation, some of the health insurance, because we're self-insured, some of the adjustments they made. We actually only utilized about eight hundred thousand dollars of fund balance last year. So it was a huge swing even based on the September information. So we still have a healthy fund balance, we're still at or just slightly above our board policy for that. I'm going to go down to Fund Twenty-One. At one point in time, this is actually a negative fund balance. I didn't, I thought it was a typo when I presented it one time, I even confessed Superintendent Kirkagard, it's actually related to the auditorium project. So we are carrying at this point in time a negative fund balance because Fund Twenty-One is what supported that activity. It's my understanding that the foundation, our foundation is going to be making the final payment. So we actually have several hundred thousand dollars of real balance, so this is offsetting that at this point in time. We are changing over a little bit of our fund structure. We're going to see some more activity in here, I'm working with the secondary schools to utilize this. But again, this is the anticipated activity at this point in time. Fund Twenty-Seven, which is for special education, again, this is driven by IEPs and all those services and programs we offer to those students. This fund has to balance, a little over eleven point seven million dollars, slight increase from last year. But last year we saw a little bit of a dip or a little decrease. But again, primarily driven by the staffing, the services, all the costs associated with special education. We do transfer in about seven point two million dollars of money from our general fund. They don't, they're not self-sustaining in the fact that they were never designed to be. So we do balance them out with our general fund monies. Fund Twenty-Nine, which is Head Start, that's a grant. I had about half of it in when we talked and spoke in June, or excuse me, in September. The full grant allocation is one point two two eight million dollars, that's all accounted for at this point in time. It's a Head Start, pretty rare that we operate it within our school district, it's kind of neat. They partner with the 4K program and whatnot. Fund Thirty-Eight, non-referendum debt, again, we're levying for about one point two million dollars this year, one point one, one point two million dollars based on that repayment schedule. Again, non-referendum debt, so that's with operational dollars. If that goes away, that money essentially flows back into the general fund. And that, we do have that sun setting in the near future. Fund Thirty-Eight, which is referendum debt, and this is where I've got the green, the six point three five million dollars because it's possible or even probable that that dollar amount might change based on your motion this evening. But I've just still at this point in time included the full revenue for the full three point one five million dollars defeasance. We do, as you can see, last year our debt payments were only one point seven million. This year they did jump back up to three point two million, so we're able to make payments on those. Capital Expansion Fund, this has, from last year to this year, we've increased it by four percent. Again, these are general fund dollars that we move into a designated trust specific for facilities-related projects. And it's my understanding Mr. Ross will be fully utilizing that. We do have a fund balance there though, so at some point we could utilize that, go beyond our annual allocation with approval by the board. Fund Forty-Six, only activity planned for this current year, much as like the last year and the prior year, is interest income only. We're not making any transfers into Fund Forty-Six, just the interest income. Last year it performed fairly well, we're anticipating the same this year. We're growing that balance slowly, but it can be used as of this past July first. And I might anticipate here in the next couple of years, we would utilize it. Fund Forty-Nine, this is where we had to put the Barton proceeds, the Barton Elementary. I tried putting it in Fund Forty-One and the Department of Public Instruction yelled at me. It actually rejected it and said, you can't do that. We previously used, when there is a referendum, you utilize Fund Forty-Nine. We still have it open and it's accessible. So the Barton sale proceeds are deposited in there. We'll keep an eye on it, it's now seen as a fund balance, but whenever we would like to utilize it, we can. There's no time limitation on using that fund.
Can you utilize it out of Forty-Nine or do you have to transfer it to Forty-One?
No, you can actually have to use it in Fund Forty-Nine. And it really should be used for capital project-related funds. Fund Fifty is Nutritional Services. They had a little bit of a unique budgeting situation last year. They ended up utilizing about forty thousand dollars, excuse me, forty thousand dollars of their fund balance, unanticipated. We did just have a flat meal price approved here a while ago. So I'm working with Abby Padilla, the director of this program, we're going to make sure that we take a look at this year's budget, make sure that we're doing what we can to watch those expenditures, promote the program to get some revenues in and participation with the kiddos, even see what we can't do about promoting free introduced. We know that there's families out there that are not filling that out for a variety of legitimate reasons, but really what can we do to help promote that program to make sure that the kiddos have that breakfast and the lunch that they deserve and that they need. Balanced nutritional services though for two thousand nineteen, twenty. Fund Seventy-Three, Other Post-Employment Benefits, this is where we have revenue, both the district transfer in from our general fund. We have some retiree monies coming in as well as interest. We did very well last year with the interest, that's projected to continue. Interest rates are dropping just a little bit, but actually this year utilizing this just a little bit. We did use a smidge of fund balance last year, again, because of those retiree costs, they used the service of those health insurance benefits, that's reflected here. But we're anticipating with the transfer in this year and the utilization, that will actually add back a little bit of fund balance again. Fund Eighty, which is our Community Services Fund, I disclosed all the programs at our annual budget hearing, what's involved here. We have our School Resource Officers, we have our before, after-school programs, we have some community partners that are included in here. I call this anything outside of a typical school day. Typical school day meaning it could be a part of the school day, it's just not a typical program that would be offered. Again, state statutes that govern this. But a proposed budget where we're actually going to be utilizing a portion of that two hundred and sixty thousand dollar, or excuse me, two hundred and twelve thousand dollar fund balance, that's done on purpose. But over the next three or four years, we'll utilize that to help kind of minimize the impact of these programs that we're able to offer. You might think, what the heck is Fund Ninety-One? Fund Ninety-One's cooperative, this is the Ice Bears, which is our boys' hockey team. We've been doing it a little bit incorrectly over the past couple of years, we're the fiscal agent. We are running it through our general fund or even our Student Activity Fund. It's not allowable, so we're straightening some of that out. There's a hundred and four thousand dollars of activity, twenty-eight thousand of it is our students and then the remaining seventy-five thousand dollars or so is actually other school districts and even parents paying our district to help balance out Fund Ninety-One, which again is a cooperative program since we're the fiscal agent. Any questions on the budget at all? I went through it fairly quickly and I think we'll have another bout of that with the activity, what's happened in the first quarter here in a couple of minutes.
Andy, can you help me out? We said we got a little more stadium than what we anticipated. Is that partly because our enrollment dropped a little bit more and we have more of a averaging for declining enrollment? Where did that extra money come from and the-
Yeah, so when they take a look, and I'd love to have about two hours of your time and I'll graph out, there's three different tiers of how they calculate. Again, it's how property rich we are and how much money school districts spend. Those are the two variables. And then there's three different areas upon which they calculate how much state aid we get. And so it's actually, the reason that we received that additional money is because we spent just a little bit more money last year than what was originally recorded. So they worked that into the three-tier formula. Yep, yeah, great question. Yeah, I think that was approximately four hundred thousand dollars of new money since September. It's all reflected in here. I think we've got a pretty sound budget, I'm feeling really comfortable. It's probably one of the better budgets I've put together. I have to comment, I think we're, I was probably only here for maybe a month or two as an executive team and a cabinet team. Very sound decision-making, I think the process that we went through this year, again, we cut nearly two million dollars and it was primarily staffing related and we tried to minimize impact to the students and to the classroom. But it was a heck of a team effort this year, I was very impressed with that. We're going to be talking again here very soon and in fact, I had a little footnote that I pulled out, but we're already working on two thousand twenty, twenty-one budget and taking a look at what that means and what we're going to have to do again to bring a balanced budget forward, address some opportunities and challenges that are on our horizon.
Is there a pay raise involved in this budget?
I do have a dollar amount associated with an increase for all employee groups.
We see overall salaries are down versus prior years, however, fewer employees as well.
Fewer employees, exactly.
All right, appreciate the presentation. Any questions or further discussion on the tax levy and the final budget?
Paul, could you hear us okay?
Yes, Don, thank you.
I appreciate the hard work everybody put into this final budget. Seeing that, seeing capital projects, allocated dollars for capital projects increase, I think is very important. Obviously, that was something the task force uncovered was we need to keep funding our capital projects. And it sounded like in the Barton Fund Forty-Nine, there could potentially be even more dollars available. Is that something, I don't know that Dave's here, but is that something Dave is holding off for down the road? Or does he have ideas of where, should we have increased that capital budget even more this year?
You know, we do have the ability to amend it. I will tell you that we'll come in next year with a higher amount than we had this year. So it's, we're going to recommend that we have a increase in our capital budget for the following year and thereafter, not just based on the task force, based on what we know was right, that we truly were underfunding our maintenance budget for many years. And so we're going to address that. And at this point in time, we just need to figure out where's the best set of priorities as what needs to happen first and then we'll address it accordingly.
Steve Ross has been implementing a new software that's introduced and I know that he's identifying all the projects, the timeline, the estimated costs. And I know that here, again, in the horizon and in the very near future, we're going to start prioritizing those. And I think it's just newer information and a little bit more expanded information upon which we can make some decisions moving forward.
Just one other quick comment. In just a few minutes, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the enrollment and some projections. And just to make sure everybody is aware that even though our enrollment is going down a little bit each year, that doesn't necessarily mean that we will generate less tax revenue. What it might mean is that we get less state aid because the state tells us that as a district, you should spend X amount on your assessed valuation. If we have ten thousand kids, we're still going to collect X amount of taxes. If we have five thousand, we're going to collect that, you just spread it over more or fewer kids. But for the most part, our tax request doesn't necessarily go down hand in hand with our enrollment. State aid might go down with our enrollment, but we'll just spend more local money and less state aid to balance our budget. And I'm speaking and Andy, you're the expert on this, is that accurate?
No, that's accurate. Again, you know how property rich or property poor a district is, is really what determines that state aid. And so again, when you have fewer students, your property values are growing, that makes you appear more property rich. And if you're growing faster property value-wise than your neighbors of the other four hundred and twenty districts in the state, that will start to equalize out and that can impact, again, not necessarily just your bottom line, which it does because you're educating fewer students, but also then where your money's coming from between your property taxes versus state aid. Thank you, sir.
And that sounds exactly what's happened this year, especially our property values went up by seven percent and our number of students went down by two hundred and thirty-four.
And that we will actually see in next years, there's always a year delay for that.
Any more questions? We do need to entertain a motion on the tax levy and final budget. There are three different options in here and for the sake of the large number- There are three different options in here and for the sake of the large numbers and how it affects the budget, I think that's why you've proposed three different options to us. We, of course, could make up whatever option we want, but just realize there's a lot that, a lot of numbers that go behind the three different proposed motions. I can, I guess, give my fellow board members my comments first if that will help spark your thoughts. But where I'm at is it relates to the mill rate and the budget. I think this school district has done a tremendous job of being very frugal with our dollars by putting together budgets that reflect the declining enrollment, yet we have a need for the capital improvement projects. Obviously, your budget shows that. And because of that, we've put in the budget of three point one five million to defees debt. The debt is at very low interest. Total debt, I believe, is around thirty-five million?
Just under that.
Just under thirty-five million. But in reality, we've got five million in the bank. So we've really got just below thirty million in debt, again at a very low interest rate. And so because we've been so frugal with our budgeting, we can afford to pay for this voucher program by keeping the mill rate at seven point nine seven. I think it's extremely important to our taxpayers and our district to realize that one point eight five five million of that is going to the private school voucher program. Whether you support the voucher program or not, that doesn't matter. But our people who are being taxed, property taxed in our community, need to know that. Thank goodness, we're in a position where we don't have to increase the mill rate or increase property taxes, in part because our property values have gone up seven percent, which I believe is growth in our district. For people that say it was the reassessment that happened, that was last year. And we've already been taxed on that higher reassessment. So I don't think my house has gone up anymore in value since the reassessment last year. And by keeping the mill rate at seven nine seven, my portion of my school property tax should not go up. If we had zero dollars to the fees, we would have no choice but to increase the mill rate to pay for this, to pay for the private school vouchers. But in this year, in this very frugal budget that you've put together, we do have the dollars to pay for that. Instead of defeating three point one five million, we can still defeat two point two three five million in addition to the five million we've already got in the bank. So that's the route I'd like to go. Again, I think it's very important for our taxpayers to realize that we are paying for this instead of increasing the mill rate. And it might not be that way down the road. If the private school vouchers double again next year, we will have no choice but to increase the mill rate to pay for it. So that's where I'm leaning on this. Would appreciate it if my fellow board members' thoughts and comments on it. I don't know that you'll sway me off of my idea, but that's where I sit.
Turn my mic on. I have a couple of comments. So, I mean, a couple of comments are, this is a surprise. Surprise opening the agenda for this and getting a call from the superintendent. So this is a very serious matter and what we need to do and consider. That being said, I'm just going to step back a while. I think if you ask the average taxpayer, do they know thirty-five cents out of their mill rate is going to fund private schools, they would say, I bet you ninety percent say no. I was a taxpayer before I was in this position. I didn't know. So I think that needs to be communicated. I also think we are the benefit of a district having great private schools, which benefits our whole community. So I'm not opposed to, I've visited a lot of our private schools and they are wonderful. So it's just an issue we have in our community to how we're going to fund it. It seems like the legislature has dictated we need to tax it under our levy. So to me, it is more of a pass-through cost and need to be educated. Although, just hearing, so I'm getting slightly swayed by some of Joel's comments and your comments that we maybe do have this one-time possibility to eat the whole increase, which is significant, almost a million dollars, and take it off of debt we were going to pay down. It's just, it's a balancing act because the community wants us to be fiscally responsible and lower our debt. So I do think we have to be a good communicator of just that, again, this thirty-five cents a year mill rate is going to private schools in the area and face that issue. I do think if we just approve the mill rate at what it is, I would still like to communicate that to the community. So that's my general comments. I'm still weighing the decision in my mind. Would like to hear other people's comments.
Well, I guess, I think it's unfortunate that we're put in this position that, you know, we've heard from our community during the referendum, you need to defeat that or pay down your debt or whatever. And now we're faced with a situation where we can't do that at the seven ninety-seven that we've already set. So, I mean, I think I've questioned this before and I realize when we have our annual meeting, we don't have all the data, which always seems very strange to me that we can't push the annual meeting until after we have this information so that then what we're actually providing to people are real numbers. So it just seems like kind of a backwards situation that we're faced with. Could we have the annual meeting yet? No.
We can have the annual meeting up until October thirty-first by state statute.
But now we've already set it for next year earlier.
We have set it for next year. And even with the information having become available on October fifteenth, the timeline was still tight to update everything for this meeting this evening.
Okay.
So it's, I've done it on, I've done the annual meeting and the budget hearing on this evening in prior years. It's just, it's a little bit awkward because then, that meeting is really for the community. And how are you guys going to now take action on an item and still allow for the meeting before this to have public input?
No, it's a weird catch-twenty-two because I feel like, you know, we're kind of basing our estimates, well, they're estimates, they're guesses. I mean, and clearly this voucher program continues to go up. So I have serious concerns for the future. I mean, if we decide tonight that we're going to eat this, as we've kind of stated, we won't be able to do that in the future. This is like a one-time shot. And, you know, we have a lot of other obligations that we have to take care of. So, I mean, I have concerns for what we're setting up for the future, quite honestly. I mean, and I think obviously the state needs to take a very serious look at this voucher program and where is it going? And what does that mean to the taxpayer? And the fact that there's such limited information out there about the voucher program is concerning to me as a taxpayer. I would like to see on my tax bill, X dollars to the school district, X dollars to the voucher program. I think that's a great way to educate the general population. County has to pull it out, city has to pull it out. We have to show it. Why wouldn't we have to show it for the voucher program? And I realize that's not your issue. That's just me soapboxing here. Like, that's ridiculous. So, I mean, I have really mixed emotions about this. This is, we're really, you know, at the eleventh hour, trying to make a really tough decision tonight about our future and kind of saying, well, this is a one-shot deal, but what does that mean for next year? And if you're going to start working on the budget, I mean, I would highly suggest that we anticipate voucher program to be at two point five million for next year or something. I mean, we can't assume it's going to stay the same.
Nancy, I share your concerns. I think, I don't think anyone here is kind of turning the school voucher program into the villain. It's really, it's a, Kurt, you said it, it's a pass-through. I mean, this was the will of the people through their legislators and so we respect that. And so there's no one here who's saying it can't be part of the budget. It has to be part of the budget. So the question then comes down to, well, since we've talked about the potential of defeasance as something where maybe we've got some flexibility, as I had said before, I think we got loud and clear the message from the voters that debt interest is something that they'd rather retire sooner as opposed to later. And I think that's important as well. So in my mind, I think what breaks that tie, so to speak, is we're fortunate that we were able to refinance the debt at lower interest. And so the delaying of a payment doesn't have that significant a financial impact. Would definitely rather see it sooner as opposed to later. And so I think that sways me to keeping the mill rate the same. That being said, I agree, if this doubles again next year, we're essentially out of cushion, unless we can find it somewhere else in the budget. But I think it's important for us, Kurt, like you were saying too, to be sure to educate the voters because this very well may be a different decision next year. We're fortunate we have the luxury of that cushion this year.
You made a comment during the presentation that we already took two point something out of last year's budget. We made cuts from last year's budget into this year's budget. A lot of it headcount, correct?
It was headcount, yes.
And Don, do you know the dollar amount of?
You lost me a little bit. So what are you looking for?
Cuts that were made from last year's budget to make this year's budget a balanced budget. Last year, we predicted to go into fund balance. You mentioned that we didn't go into fund balance as much as we originally thought, which is a great thing.
Yep.
But what was the dollar amount of cuts that were already made?
Andy, and you have those numbers. I believe that our two thousand nineteen twenty budget is close to two million dollars less than the two million, than the two thousand eighteen nineteen budget. And so sometimes people talk about a budget cut is that we were going to increase it by ten percent. So, and we only increased it by five percent, so we cut five percent out of the budget. Well, you didn't. You increased it by five percent, not ten percent. In our case, what we're talking about is that our budget, approved budget that you're going to approve tonight, is actually, general fund budget is two million dollars less than the approved budget for last year. And so that is significant. That doesn't have anything to do with the defeasement. That doesn't have anything to do with the voucher. Those are things that we did last year to make sure that when we came forward tonight, we had a balanced budget. We know that with two hundred and thirty-four students less in our school system this year than we had last year, we're going to have to make some difficult decisions again because you can't just use your surplus because if you do, you end up with a train wreck down the road. You need to make the cuts when it's necessary to make the cuts. And as we go forward, we're going to have to have very serious discussions with the cabinet, with the school board as to how do we balance the budget again next year? And so if that's a million five, does that number go down again next year? Well, we're going to come forward to you with a balanced budget in October of two thousand twenty. No questions about it. And so that might be another million and a half less than it is this year, or a million dollars less than it is this year, even with the proposed increases in transportation and all of those other things. I think it's two million dollars is the answer.
Correct.
And? I guess that's the part that concerns me is whatever decision we take tonight in this era of, you know, hundred and forty-character tweets and short attention spans, next year, we're going to be looking at, again, a precarious operating budget situation. Plus, even if we budget two and a half and let's say this comes in at three million or whatever it might be, if we hold off on a, what, fifteen cent increase and we eat that out of the defeasance amount this year, now we're looking at potentially a twenty-five, thirty cent increase next year. And people will forget how we made this work twelve months prior, right now. And oh my gosh, we went from seven ninety-seven to eight twenty-seven. What's going on in the district? And it, I agree that it's very unfortunate that we become the machine for generating this revenue for Madison and it's buried inside a number that you do not see clearly called out in your tax bill like you do with MPTC and so forth. So the onus is on us to message. I'm not about raising taxes, but at the same time, this is not something we have visibility to. It's not anything we have direct control over. I do like the idea of paying down our debt faster. I wouldn't be opposed to the middle-ground approach of eight oh five, understanding that, yes, it's an increase, but it's, we're still doing what we can to accelerate that retirement of the referendum debt to an extent more than if we keep, if we fund this overage entirely out of that defeasance amount.
So just a quick comment and make sure everybody is aware of that, the public as well, is that if you stay at seven ninety-seven, you're still defeating a little over two million dollars. It's just originally we had planned on defeating three point one. We had, actually, we were going to tax a little bit more than we needed to. We're going to keep it the same levels we did last year and we were going to pay three million dollars ahead of time and we're still going to pay two million. So even if you, if you choose to stay at seven ninety-seven, you're still defeating a little more than two million dollars, okay? If you go all the way up to the full amount, eight eleven or eight twelve or whatever that number is, then you're defeating that whole three point one million, okay? Doesn't have anything to do with the budgets. Doesn't have anything to do with our operating expense. It's just truly, do you want to defees more or less? That's really what it comes down to.
I personally am not in favor of increasing the mill rate so that we can pay down more debt. That's just my position. I think if you're going to ask most people, that's what they would say. I could be wrong, but just, that's what my gut tells me. I also think that most people who apply for and receive the private school vouchers in their minds, they're already paying taxes at the existing rate and they deserve that money as much as anybody else does. So they don't think they should have to see an increase in their taxes to offset it. So my, this is very difficult. I'm not saying this is an easy decision, but my, I'm going to vote with not increasing the mill rate and yet we're still defeating the debt. It's just not to the same degree. So we are very fortunate to have money to be able to do that.
Go ahead, Erin.
I'm going to second a lot of what Paul said. I think, well, I wouldn't want to raise taxes either. That we did hear pretty clearly through the referendum that West Bend community doesn't like to carry a lot of debt. And there was a lot of talk about trying to pay that off and how to do that and how defeasement works during that whole process. So I'm going, I guess my preferred option would be the Goldilocks approach here where it's kind of middle-ground. But once again, I'm still, I'm still really thinking about it as well.
Eight cents increase in a mill rate equates to, like, say a hundred thousand, you divide that by one thousand, you multiply it by eight cents, right? Which is what?
So eight cents.
I don't do math in public, remember?
Eight cents increase in the mill rate will be eight dollars on a hundred thousand dollar house. Three hundred thousand dollar house is twenty-four dollars. A million dollar house.
Annually.
Annually, annually, okay.
Because they get sure everyone knows.
Yeah, so that's what eight cents is, is eight dollars annually on a hundred thousand dollar house. Twenty-four on a three hundred, you know, do the math. And?
Point oh eight times one thousand.
I just wanted to make sure that.
Eight bucks.
Okay.
And it translates to four hundred thousand dollars. Each of the eight cents translates to four hundred thousand dollars or five point two billion dollars. Pretty straightforward math, so.
I don't know this for certain, but I think the average home in our district is just shy of three hundred thousand. Does that sound about right?
I don't know yet. And I don't remember that being discussed during the referendum this past spring, but it's something that I will be looking at very soon.
Let's just say it's somewhere between two hundred and three hundred. Make my range even bigger. It's sixteen to twenty-four dollars annually, just so that we can defeat four hundred thousand dollars more than if we would have done to kept it flat. And again, to me, that's, people aren't going to know why. You know, they're just going to see that it went up. And this, you know, communication, I agree with Paul, communication is extremely important in a situation like this. But unfortunately, that communication really coming from the district is so touchy when you're talking about private school vouchers. And even if we put an article out there that talked about, you know, one point eight five five million coming from here to pay for that, people in our community will question why that information is, you know, pro-private school voucher people will question the fact, why is that communication coming from the district? So to me, again, it's, I don't think it's even worth the four hundred thousand dollars. the $400,000 to meet halfway in between. I think people will see the mill rate go up and wonder what happened, and they won't seek the information.
And I don't disagree with that, Joel. You know, at the end of the day, given, given the percentage that we're dealing with and the last-minute perception, I, I'm not opposed to the flat approach here. But I think to Nancy's point, Andy, when we start working at building the budget for next year, I think we do need to, if you go back to, what was slide four, and you look at the, sorry, slide five, and you look at the historical run rate here, I think we're better off budgeting at 2.5 mil next year. And maybe we find out that it only goes to 2.1, and we're pushing 400 the other way into defeasement, and we're having the opposite of this conversation. But there, at least, we would be looking from, say, you know, that June 1st, look at the budget, and it's something that we've got time to plan for, as opposed to having this sprung on us, and at the 11th hour happening, having to then spring something on the taxpayers' immunity. So to Joel's point, I can, I can see the flat side of this as well, having merits. And as much as I have concerns about burying this in the grand scheme, that may be the prudent thing to do at this point, just because of the late minutes.
We have our district budget drivers that we talk about as you prepare your annual budget. If 1.855, and we keep the mill rate the same, does 1.855 become, let's say, the budget driver of, of preparing your budget for next year, for accounting for that next year?
Yeah. I believe we need to take a look at the budget drivers as a whole, and understand what they mean, and if they still have value in our school district. So I think at that point in time, possibly early, late, not even late winter, early winter, I think we should have a discussion surrounding that.
Just a real quick, the discussion we're having right now really isn't part of our budget drivers, though. So the budget drivers are what we use to develop our budget, period. This is not part of our budget. This is a outlier, and it always will be an outlier. And so it's a pass-through money, or however we want to call it. But, but the budget driver for whether it's 1.8, or 2.5, or 3.6, really has nothing to do with our budget, period, okay? It has to deal with the overall mill levy, and, or mill rate and levy at the end. And those are not, you don't have any choice in that part, okay? That that is going to be an increase on the levy, whether it's 1.8 or 3.6, those, that's totally outside of your control. That's outside of our budget drivers. Our budget drivers are what we use to develop the operating budget, the revenue, the expenses within the budget that we have. That's, this is not a budget driver. Defeasement is not a budget driver. Those are things above and beyond, when we talk about the mill rate in our tax levy, those are above and beyond that, but they really don't become part of the budget drivers. The budget drivers are what we're using to figure out how much money we have to cut out of the budget next year to have a balanced budget.
Okay, can I just ask a question? So if we would, if you would put the 2.5, or whatever the magic number is, next year, just as a larger estimate, before we just have the mill rate discussion in September, is there a way you can break out, like, approximately what part of the mill rate would relate to a 2.5 million dollar?
Yeah. So what I would anticipate, where we did have, and I think, again, it was on June, June 18th, this past spring, we, we had a preliminary budget that was approved. It would be my intent this spring to be able to bring forward information at that point in time, so we can start looking a little bit more information. It was just a little bit of a different spring, a little bit untypical.
I just think it would be nice to know-
Yes.
-that 35 cents for this, what the proposed piece would be.
So just real quick, I can tell you right now that if you add 19 cents to 35, you can propose $2,700, $2,800,000, and it's a 54-cent tax implication at the current assessed valuation. If the assessed valuation goes up another 5%, then it's going to be less than that. But, but that's, you could look at that 19 and the 35, and add $940,000 to the, to the 1.85, and that's the impact next year of a $2,800,000, yeah, voucher system, okay?
Well, and that's on the bright side, assuming the assessed values all go up by that much. Assessed values could be flat, or even take a dive. You have no idea.
I'm saying is, if there's no increase at all in assessed valuation, that's what it would be. If there's an increase in assessed valuation, then that number will go down based on you're spreading it out over more wealth. If there's no increase at all, it will be four point, or excuse me, 5.4 mil, or .54 mils based on, is that right?
That's exactly right. Yep, pretty straightforward.
But as we look at that, I mean, and we're trying to make some decisions for the future. I mean, I think it's important, I think you do a phenomenal job of estimating where we're going to be. I am not arguing that at all. But, you know, obviously, this was a curve ball that we weren't expecting. But, you know, I'd like to see some scenarios that show potential other curve balls next year. If assessed value is here, as opposed to here, or it remains flat, what does that look like? And if the voucher program remains flat, or if it doubles again, let's see what that looks like. Or if it hits 2.5, I guess I'd like to be able to make some, you know, I'd like to know absolute worst-case scenario versus best-case scenario, and then hopefully that we, you know, land closer to the best case, as opposed to even in the middle.
Thank you.
I move to proceed with decreasing the defeasance by approximately 800,000, for a total of 2019-2020 defeasance of 2.35 million due to the increase in the private school voucher levy, resulting in a 2019-2020 district-wide levy of $41,977,315, translating to the same mill rate as was previously included, at $7.97 per 1,000 of assessed value, on average across all district municipalities and property owners. Further motion for the final 2019-20 budget, resulting in an all-fund budget of $99,180,543 in revenues, and $96,646,585 in expenditures.
Second.
Motion and a second. And obviously, I went for number, or letter B on your screen there. Any further discussion, comments, questions? If not, this is all in favor of keeping the mill rate at 7.97, Paul. And we'll start with you.
Yes.
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 No. That motion carries, six to one. Thank you very much, Andy. You can stay right where you're at-
Thank you, sir.
-because we're going to move into revenues and expenses in the aggregate for the first quarter of this year.
I did mark down a little asterisk in the areas that I'm pointing out in this. And again, we do this on a monthly basis with, through the consent agenda. On a quarterly basis, that is an action item. So we are asking for board approval to accept information as presented. But again, quarter one, July 1st through September 30th. Interestingly, with the school year people, the ones that just started, there's only a couple of payrolls included. So where it feels like we are, well, we are a quarter of the way through the year. At this point in time, we are less than three weeks into the actual school year. So there's not a lot of activity at this point in time, but there's enough. And then as we take a look at that measurable amount, what happened in comparison to last year through the first quarter? So I do have an asterisk on the first page here, as it relates to the defeasance. Oh, excuse me, I apologize. It appears as though, right now, with the revenues in, expenditures out, right now, our cash flow is negative 500, excuse me, 5.4 million dollars. And again, the money in and the money out don't always align. We have a fairly large cash flow as of July 1st. We slowly spend the money. We do pay teachers over the course of the summer and whatnot. That gets booked to last year. We do get a couple of state aid payments and property taxes and whatnot, and they're reflected as such. But we do, our cash flow is just very interesting in comparison, probably, or quite possibly, to maybe the private sector or other industries as well. So I just wanted to point that out, because next month, we will be coming forward with a line of credit, such that we have over the last several years, for cash flow purposes. I did want to point out a 26.4, again, on general fund. This is our equipment. And as it relates, we spent very little money last year in equipment within our general fund, only $38,000. This year, as we were preparing for student devices and whatnot, those things that qualify for this, we did just spend a little bit more aggressively over the summer, and then into the school year to meet those needs. Nothing to be alarmed about, still well beyond, or well within the budget. Just wanted to point that out. Nothing else really within our general fund. Fund 21, again, as we take a look, 72.2% of our expenditures to date, that is not untypical. And as it relates to the budget itself, we're still really determining all the activity. These are all the elementary, and then again, we're already utilizing this for the secondary schools. We have been previously using Fund 60, which we don't even report out in student activity accounts. We're shifting that over, which is why we're now seeing a little bit of new activity. We will have an amended budget this spring. I'm telling you right now, probably March, probably April. I don't, I don't want to go much later than that, where we would reflect any changes. Again, a budget is a spending plan, but sometimes the plan does change. We would reflect any changes in activity at that point in time. Fund 27, special education, again, similar activity with equipment. That's where we've actually purchased a vehicle. Last year, at this point in time, we hadn't purchased anything. But this was a special ed van, minivan, that was purchased for those programs. Dues and fees was actually an auditor adjustment that was made. They moved some expenses from last year that didn't qualify into this year. Nothing to be alarmed about. That happens fairly regularly. But it appears as though our dues and fees for special ed is out of balance, or over-expensed. It is. We will reflect that on a budget amendment. The information came too late, really, essentially, to do anything about it. Fund 29 is Head Start. Not untypical that we don't have revenues at this point in time. We are organizing a claim right now, and expenditures are essentially tracking as they should, again, with salaries, benefits, purchase services, and whatnot for Head Start. Fund 38, our non-referendum debt. The only variance, why I marked it as blue, is it looks like it's a 10% decrease. Well, that's reflective of the debt payments that we have at this point in time. In September, early October, we always make interest-only, principal and interest, in the spring, typically in April. And so that's just a reflection of our debt payment for non-referendum debt. Fund 39, referendum activity, again, similar situation. Remember, last year, we had a lot smaller, this is almost opposite. Last year, with our referendum debt, we had a lot smaller debt. This year, it's increased again. It went from 1.7 up to 3.2 million. So that's why we have almost a 90% increase, oh, excuse me, a 15% increase in our referendum debt. I apologize. I forgot to make that blue on your document. Fund 41, capital expansion. I do have to apologize. As of right now, we're not showing any expenditures here. I need to make sure. We did do projects this year. We pretty much fully expensed that full $1.5 million annually. But I will make sure I follow up on that, and make sure that I track those expenditures where they're recorded and whatnot. Fund 46, which is our capital improvement trust. Again, the only activity to date is interest. We are doing very well yet this year. In fact, we've already exceeded the budget, only a quarter of the way through the fiscal year. So I will be updating that budget this spring with an amended budget, but performing quite well with our capital improvement trust. Fund 49, we will actually be recording, since that's that Barton sale proceeds. There's no activity. We will actually probably be booking a little bit of interest income on that $500,000 that's sitting there. Fund 50, nutritional services. There is a little bit of a decrease in student and staff revenue in comparison to last year. It's possible, based on the number of school days and how those monies were turned in, to account for that variance, but nothing at this point in time to be alarmed about. Fund 73, OPEB trust, very, very little activity, except for interest income, which is performing quite well. So no worries at this point in time with our other post-employment benefits. Fund 80, community services fund, we're actually utilizing that the way that we should. We've not done so the past couple of years. But taking a look at Badger with the middle school sports, and those before and after-school programs that we're offering, everything is essentially tracking the way that we believe that it should. So it's a quick rundown. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on quarter one activity.
Very good.
I move to accept the 2019-20 fiscal year quarter one revenues and expenditures in the aggregate report.
Second. Motion and a second. Any questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye, and we'll start with Paul.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Andy.
Thank you, guys.
It's almost 7 o'clock, and some of our high school students have been sitting here for an hour and a half. If you guys would like to leave, the nice lady in the back in purple is Mrs. Kales, and she can sign your papers for you. Otherwise, you are welcome to stay if you'd like. We'll move on to a proposed new high school course offering with Laura Jackson.
So in September, early September, before the annual meeting, we presented on the, a proposed new course, physical science. And we also presented on wind ensemble, giving that the designation of an honors course as it should have. Since that time, if you've had an opportunity to address any additional questions you may have, it is a long delay, but this is the first regular meeting since that time. So it is up for your vote today. Are there any questions I can address at this time?
Two great new programs at the high school. Thanks for the hard work of you and your team of putting this together.
I move to approve adding physical science to the high school course offerings, and to designate wind ensemble as an honors course, beginning in the 2020-21 school year.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye, and we'll start with Paul.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, Laura. You on this next one, too? Looks like you are.
Yeah, yes. So the policy committee had reviewed the policy for setting our calendar and our annual days of instruction. As we're going through the 300 series, this one is being brought forward to you today for your discussion and approval. It is a second reading. We do have full board, so it could be approved if you still felt that was appropriate.
Okay, so why do we, why do we have a second? I'm sorry, I'm totally confused. We have two that are being shown to us on our board docs. Am I losing my mind?
Correct. One is as-is.
You're looking at the school year calendar, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're on 321. Oh, my God, I'm so sorry. I'm like, what? I'm looking at the board, and I'm like, this is not making any sense to me. Okay, pardon me.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
Yeah, that's for the next.
All right, I'm good now. Sorry.
So this is, yeah, this is the calendar-
This is just the policy.
Policy and the school year calendar policy. So I move to approve revised board policy 321, which is the school year calendar, days and hours of instruction.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Paul?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. The next one is reading a fast-track policy recommendation for revised board policy 341.252, vehicle repair in the auto shop. Mr. Harder.
All right, good evening, everybody. So we met at the policy committee meeting, looking at a very brief update to that policy, really looking at a couple word changes, and defining the length of time that we keep a document on file. So when you bring your car to be worked on in the auto shop up at our high school, as part of our CTE program, you fill out a form, talks about liability and so forth for the district. We had no timeframe how long we kept those forms. So it could have been six months, a year, whatever. We defined it as three years as this process, so.
Yeah, we can. Yeah, Nancy was asking if we can vote on this fast-track, even with Paul on the phone. I think just since we're all attending the meeting, we can do this. Chris, you want to just quickly talk about how we didn't, the policy committee didn't feel like this made any substantial change to the policy?
Right. We thought that this was worthy of fast-track consideration, because none of the changes really alter the meaning. They're purely more explanatory. And so with that, I would move to approve fast-track recommendation for revised board policy 341.252, vehicle repair in auto technology shops.
Motion by Chris, second by Kurt. Any questions? All in favor, please signify. Yep.
Hey, Joel, just, just a clarification, Tim, so we're saying we keep the waiver on file for a minimum of three years. Obviously, there's no stated maximum, but is the intent to purge, say, in thirty-seven to forty-two month timeframes?
Yeah, so we, we would actually go past that at the three-year mark when we're done with the school year, the instructor would then be able to purge that file at that point. So it, it's a minimum recommendation. If we miss the purge, so be it, but it would be part of a process that we put in place with our instructors up at the high school where they keep all their records at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye, we'll start with Paul.
Aye.
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 Aye. And that motion carries. Thank you very much, we'll move on to our reports tonight, we've got a report from our district nurse, Amy, and I think Sharon Kaelis are going to do that.
Good evening, I'm here with Amy Brager, our district nurse, to share some updates with you about our program. And last time we were here last year, Amy won an award. And she didn't disappoint this year because she continues to represent our district and do so extremely well, so, Amy?
Hi, everyone, I'm Amy Brager, I'm the district nurse for the West Bend School District. I've just completed three years in this position and I will be sharing with you our nursing report from last school year and then talking to you a little bit about some of our goals and hopes for this school year as well. So pictured here are some of our health room professionals. This is a list of who we have on this school year, so I'm the full-time district nurse. We have one nurse in each of our school buildings with the exception of Ralph's. So there's one in the high school, one in Badger, Silverbrook, and all five elementaries. And then we have part-time support nurses, so they might be, they might work one or two days a week depending on their schedule. But they might be stationed at a specific school to help support that school during that day or they might be floating throughout the district depending on the, the medical needs of the students. Just a reminder, we operate under this framework for Twenty First Century School Nurses. It's adopted from the National Association of School Nurses. It is student-centered, followed by the community public health sector, care coordination, leadership, quality improvement, and then our standard of, standards of care as school nurses. So some of our, we have a lot of health conditions and, that are represented within our student body. Our biggest one is asthma, we had four hundred and fifty-six students with asthma last year. Thirty-two type one, students with type one diabetes. We had two hundred and thirty emergency medications in our clinics last year. That can be anything from EpiPens for anaphylaxis or life-threatening allergies. Diastat for our students with seizure disorders. Glucagon for our students with diabetes and then various other medications. We had one thousand three hundred and thirty-two students with a mental health or behavioral health disorder, those are diagnosed. So as you can see, that's a pretty large percentage of our student body and a lot of those students do come to the clinic for daily medications for those conditions. We did not have a lot of focus on data collection for participation in attendance of our five oh four meetings or IEP meetings. So we just started collecting that data last May. Basically, a little, a brief background of what we do for that. So if I have a student with special education needs or requiring five oh four accommodations in a classroom due to a medical condition, I will with the parent's consent, collect the medical records, review and evaluate those. I then do a physician or a medical provider interview and then a parent interview. Sometimes then that leads to a child observation in the classroom and then I conduct a report and I share that with the IEP team or the five oh four team that are basing the decisions off of those needs. Then I will build accommodations for what those students might need to be successful in the classroom with their medical conditions. So, so far this year, I've had the opportunity to participate and prepare information for thirty-five students. And so we'll continue to collect that information as we go. Pictured here are some more of our health room professionals in their clinics. And last year, they saw fifty-six thousand eighty-two clinic visits. So that again is over fifty-six thousand visits to the clinics with our health room professionals that would otherwise be seeing office staff or teaching or support staff if our health room professionals were not present. So some of those clinic dispositions, we had three thousand eight hundred and ninety-six students that were sent home ill. What we call that is a medical exemption or a nurse accept, which means that they fall within that guideline of sending home ill students. So that means they're throwing up or they're, they have a high fever or have something contagious that we don't want them to share with other people. But our main goal is to keep them in school, keep them healthy and attending class. So we were able to return fifty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-six students to class. There were twenty-four calls to nine one one throughout the district resulting in emergency transport services to the hospitals. We had a hundred and thirty-five students that required daily prescription medications and then seven hundred and eighty-six students with as-needed meds at school. We talked about the two hundred and thirty students with emergency medications. And then those thirty-two students with type one diabetes, they have scheduled checks throughout the day where they will come into the clinic to get insulin administered or they're doing carb counting for lunch. But then aside from that, they can come to the clinic if they have, are experiencing high or low blood sugars. So that happened two thousand two hundred and forty times within those thirty-two students last year. Some of the trainings and certifications that we accomplished last school year, we did the medication and AED training for all of our staff. That's approximately eight to nine hundred people in the beginning of every school year. We did the UAP, which is called unlicensed assistive personnel training. That's for more, more training related to diabetes care or anything, any medical procedure that needs to happen in school, so urinary cath procedure or G tube feeds or anything like that, we train additional staff if a health room professional's not present. We have two of, down in the left-hand corner there are two of our health room professionals. They are Red Cross certified CPR instructors, so they were able to certify more than eighty staff members last year in CPR. And then we held a community event where everybody in West Bend or all of our community members were welcome and we were able to certify fifty members of the community in CPR last school year in just that one morning. We held a, quite a few actually, bits of education for our staff for human trafficking last school year. We brought in some various community members and different, and partnered with different agencies to bring that education. We also brought in the FBI local task force on human trafficking to do a community education for our families. That was really well attended and received. And then we, we did make our goal of creating heart-safe schools throughout our entire district. So all eleven buildings actually received their Project Adam HeartSafe accreditation, which is the award that Sharon was talking about earlier. So you see a couple pictures on the, the other side of the screen from those types of events. And I have about eight thousand photos if you'd like to see them all. Have some videos as well, but these are just a couple pictures from our latest group. We did want to thank to our fire department was awesome and very instrumental in helping to provide some reality to some of those drills and providing additional education for our staff. But even Mr. Kirkagard got involved, I believe you choked on a doughnut that day, is that correct? Okay, so the team at the ESC. The team at the ESC did a great job responding and he's sitting here today. So we try to get everyone involved as much as possible and really I think the staff has done a phenomenal job. The, the emergency medical response teams have just continued to be very passionate about this and keeping their schools safe, which is great. Some of the school-based health initiatives and community partnerships from last year, we have partnered with the West Bend Lions Club to provide vision screenings to all kindergarten students. And last year, we expanded that to second graders as well. So about eight hundred students were screened last year and we were able to provide forty referrals to, to further their checks for classes and things. We did the Bridger, Bridging Brighter Smiles Dental Program, which provides sealants and fluoride treatments and dental cleanings to students that need those. We initially trialed that at the Fair Park location and then were able to expand it to the entire district last year and that was really successful. We provided district-wide flu immunization and measles prevention education and notification. We were a part of the Heroine Task Force Committee, worked with the Washington Ozaki Health Department, the police and fire departments on improvement of our communicable disease safety procedures, especially with measles threats looming for the state. We wanted to make sure we were ready if, in the event that that hit. We created the West Bend School District Anti-Human Trafficking Committee, which is where a lot of those educational opportunities came out of last year. That committee was led by Dana Lesowski, which is one of our family liaisons and pretty much always attended by members of our people services staff, school counselors, nurses, family liaison members. So we had a great brainstorming group there. The clinical experiences that we provide for the Marion University students that are trying to achieve their bachelor's of, of nursing, they get to do rotations, so we help coordinate that throughout the school year. And then our district immunization compliance rate for last year was ninety-nine point seven percent. That was up almost three percent from the previous year. For those of you that may not know, any school district that is under ninety-nine percent compliance has to exclude children that are not compliant. Had to do that my first year and I said I was never going to do it again. So we actually, because of that large jump in such a short time, received the twenty nineteen CDC Childhood Immunization Champion Award for the state of Wisconsin. That's a pretty big deal, it's, there's only one awarded for, for each state every year. If you look at the CDC website, it's mostly physicians, so it's kind of uncommon for a nurse to receive it, even beyond that, a school nurse. So the, the Department of Health Services was really excited about that and wanted to do a video highlight of the health room professionals in our district, so I'd like to show that to you now.
I am very, very pleased to say that the West Bend School Nurse Team, you have been awarded the twenty nineteen CDC Childhood Immunization Champion Award for the state of Wisconsin.
I did know that we were nominated, but I did not know that you won. It's so exciting because we put so much work into the immunization process, especially in the beginning of the year when it's already crazy busy. A school has to be at ninety-nine percent or higher in order to not have to exclude children. So that's where we were falling short previously to at our ninety-seven percent. We really wanted to make sure we never had to exclude children again. So we worked really hard to really boost that rate up to beyond ninety-nine percent so that we were able to have all of our children safe and attending school.
As advocates for students, that's our job, that is what school nursing is, we advocate for our students. It's just how the district nurses, the school nurses, the pediatricians, how are we going to prepare for that? And that's what starts at a school level for us, is that we're advocating for our children, it's imperative.
A good portion of my time in the beginning of every school year is spent collecting information, whether that's from the Wisconsin Immunization Registry, from parents, from doctors.
We made hundreds of phone calls, hundreds and hundreds of phone calls to families to follow up, to make sure that they weren't falling in that non-compliance.
When talking to the parents, just being able to explain the importance of their child being protected. Hi, what can I do for you? Have you had this problem before? Their parents should be able to feel that we are providing safe care for them and we are providing safety for them.
I always encourage those vaccines to be up to date and especially now, we hear these stories in the news about something that was once eradicated becoming a concern again.
It's scary because, A, I'm a mother of two children and one of which is not completely vaccinated because of timeline and age and when those requirements hit. So it's scary for these kids as well and their safety when we have these kids who can't get these vaccinations or be immunized.
Hi, my name is Amy Brager, I'm a district nurse for the West Bend School District. We are so proud of our ninety-nine point seven percent compliance rate for immunizations. We challenge all school nurses out there to take a look at your immunization compliance rate. Together, we can all really make a big difference in the community and keep our schools a safe place for our children.
So we were really excited about that.
That's great.
Thanks. So to kind of give you a little picture, and actually today was the deadline for this school year, so it's fresh. So kind of give you a little picture of what type of work goes into that. So for example, one school this year had two hundred and fifty students that were non-compliant after the legal notices went out. So that's two hundred and fifty phone calls to those families to explain to them what they need to do in order to become compliant. We have families that just need education, they need additional resources, so kind of pointing them out to how they can get to be vaccinated. If they're making a decision not to vaccinate, you know, what the risks of that, that decision is. So it's really a lot of education at that point and a lot of public health work. So again, with that one school, there's your two hundred and fifty phone calls. Beyond that, it's like the next week, you run the report again and there's, you know, maybe a hundred of those families left. So then making those phone calls again for those a hundred families. And then maybe sending out emails or checking to see where our waiver status is and collecting those, that information from physicians or maybe there's a disconnect in the, the physician community about, we found out recently that there was, one of the hospital systems had their, their vaccine charting system was down, so they weren't getting inputted at the appropriate time. So just doing a lot of investigative work at that point. So each of our site nurses calls, makes those phone calls to those families and sends those emails and things. And then we have the support nurses that jump in and help wherever they can. We have program assistants at the ESC that help us with our younger kiddos, that, you know, anybody in pre-K. And then I field a lot of phone calls and questions and concerns as well. So really, it's a huge group effort to get to that point. I'm happy to say that I'm hoping, as, as long as the state comes back with the same numbers I have, we should be good for this year. So it's, it just is a lot of work that goes into that first few weeks of school. So then moving forward for this school year, we hope to continue our committee, committee participation throughout the community. We've added a couple meetings and places that we find that are exciting to be a part of for our district. The UAP training expansion, with our reduction in our workforce, we really had to look at where are some other areas that we can still keep our students safe and that is providing that diabetes unlicensed assistive personnel training to more staff, so teachers and support staff. So I've spent a lot of time this school year already focusing on training those individuals in the event that there's not a health room professional available. The vision and dental programs, we hope to continue to expand. We have been working on improvement processes with our health-related IEPs. And then over the summer, I spent a lot of time working and developing an emergency action plan that will go into the electronic database, so it's faster for, for teachers to be able to access rather than looking at health plans on paper. Continuation of our nursing students' clinical experiences and then keeping up with the emergency medical response teams and CPR education throughout the district. Our big education piece that we're excited about this year is doing some vaping education. So we've been working closely, Sharon and I, at providing, seeing how we can provide those to the different levels of students and then our, our community as well. So the picture you see here was actually taken last week at Badger Middle School. All of them received the education from the Concordia Nurse Practitioner students. And then we have some things in the works, works for the other student levels and then we're hoping to have our friends from Children's Hospital of Wisconsin Pulmonary Medicine, they'll be doing a community presentation here in West Bend in December, so we're working on all the details of that. So with all of that information, thank you so much for letting me present to you all tonight. Does anybody have any questions for me?
With great stuff like that, you're welcome to present anytime you'd like to.
Thank you.
That's wonderful stuff, congratulate you and your team on that on behalf of all of us, please.
Thank you.
Any questions? Very good, thank you. We'll move on to another report here tonight on our student enrollment data and I think Superintendent Kirkagard's going to take that. We'll move on to another report here tonight on our student enrollment data, and I think Superintendent Kirkagard's going to take that.
Thank you. I think you have this information. I sent it out earlier, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody had an opportunity to look at it and to go through some of those enrollment numbers that we have talked about. Our enrollment's going south, and it has been for quite a few years, and it's going to go for quite a few more years. If you look at the first sheet, the first sheet is based on state aid enrollment, okay? Which is a little bit different than actual kids in seats because there's a different way to figure it out. And so, if you go back six years to 2013, we had 6,981 students. If you look at this year, we have 6,358 students. So, we're down about 600 students since 2014. And if you look at the first year that it really took a dive, it was between the year 15 and 16. It looks like in 15, we had 6,854 students. 16, we had 6,823 students. Well, that's only 31 students. But that's also the first year that we had 4K. So, that you added actually another 175 full, equivalent to full-time students. There were more kids than that, but you don't get to count each student as one FTE when you're in 4K. So, if you go to the second page, and the second page is the same information, but that's based on actual students in the chairs. And so, if you go down to this current year, we have 6,279 students in chairs, okay? We're a little bit more than that for state aid because the kids who open and roll out, we count those. We pay the district in the end a tuition amount, but we still get to count those students. And so, our enrollment is down to 6279. The same thing if you go between 15 and 16. It went from 6635. It actually went up a little bit to 67, but that includes 348 4K students. And so, you can look at those numbers and you see where we're at in the district. The next one, and I know you have that information, I sent out to you, you know, this just shows you the information from 2006 through 2019 in each grade level. And so, just shows you the increase, decrease. If you were an actuary or if you were a financial person, you look at the diagonals, okay? So, if you look at 2018 kindergarten, for example, and it shows that we have 362 kids in kindergarten in 2018. If you go over on the diagonal, it shows that we have 346 students in first grade. So, there's actually 16 kids that were in kindergarten last year that aren't there this year. If you go up another year, you go to 2017, it'll show you 408 in kindergarten. The following year, there is 387 in first grade, then 384 in first, in this year, in second grade. And so, those diagonals can tell us a lot of information. We don't have all of the information available yet as to where those kindergarten students went. The 362 last year, and now there's 346, we're trying to figure out where those 16 left. And it might be 26 because we may be picked up 10 additional as well. And so, that's information we truly need to take a look at. And Andy and Nancy are getting that information available for me. If you go to the next page, that just shows enrollment by building, okay? And you can see the numbers, and every one of them is down a little bit. So, if you look at Decorah, in 2014, we had 451 students. 2019, we have 368. And so, Fair Park, Green Tree, Jackson, McLean, Silverbrook, you know, you can see the numbers. And for the most part, every one of them is down in the last six years. And I didn't go back past that because that's when we started to do the 4K. And it becomes a little bit more of a challenge with that. And so, those are just numbers. You know, I will tell you that I haven't looked at all of the numbers, but Jackson, for example, we're down to 351. We have about 60 kids who open and roll out of Jackson, okay? And so, that's, that, you know, we try to get the data as to why they're opening and rolling out, but the Jackson area is our largest open and rolling out of the district. And then, the last sheet I have for you to look at gives us some projections, okay? And so, it takes a look at the elementary, and it says currently we have 1,895 students in the elementary. I made an assumption that the kindergarten class would stay the same and that every kid who's in school this year stays in school throughout their whole career. And so, when I talked about the diagonals, we know that that's not accurate, but for predictions, that's what I looked at. And so, if you look at elementary, 1,895, it will go down in 2022 to 1,802. That's based with current kids in the district. After that, I have it leveling off at 1,820. That's because I anticipated 364 kids in kindergarten going forward. All those kids have, they haven't even been born yet, but I just used a constant number. And so, you look at 1,820 is where it would level off if we had 364 and we kept all the kids. If you go to Silverbrook, Silverbrook has 875. It opened up 70 years ago, and at that time, I think it was built for about 1,000 students, okay? And so, 875 now. If you go down to 2024, it will have 710 kids based on every student who's currently in the district stays in the district. When you get down to 2025, now you start looking at those kindergarten kids who haven't been born yet, but I'm saying that there's 364. If you go to Badger, the same thing. So, Badger shows 928 students this year. It goes down to that same 710 because the who, the fifth and sixth graders will eventually be seventh and eighth grade. And those numbers project those future enrollment declines. And 728 is leveling off based on current 364 students plus everybody staying. When you go to the high school, we're at 2184 this year. If you look at current students in the school, I added 50 kids every year, once they become ninth graders, based on Holy Angels and Caprini. That's typically, the last few years, we picked up about 50 parochial students who come to high school. And so, if you look at down to 2028, which sounds like a long ways down the road, but it's not, you're down to 1,669 students between east and west together, okay? That's making the assumption that we pick up 50 kids every year for the ninth grade class. And it also makes the assumption that every student who's in the school system this year stays there, and that hasn't been the case. And so, it's not a doom and gloom, it just truly is reality. And so, when we make our, have our discussions as to what we do next and what do we plan for, I think we need to be very conscientious about our enrollment. And that best-case scenario, we're going to look at a declining enrollment for 78, seven to eight years based on our current kids in school. That might change, and I'm hoping the 364 becomes 424. But at this point in time, I don't have any indication to show that it would be. Our 4K numbers are actually down just a couple from last year. And so, if the 4K is an indication of kindergarten, we're down about five students 4K this year from last year. And so, like I said, not anything definite, but want us to have some enrollment information as we go forward and look at what do we do in the district? What do we do with the reference? And what do we do with our facilities and the whole situation? So, gladly try to answer any questions you might have, pretty black and white numbers.
So, Dan, is this largely based on the fact of just population trends?
The vast majority is based on population trends. That there are certain districts in the state of Wisconsin that are going up. Much of Wisconsin is not. And we're part of that suburb of the Milwaukee area that is declining enrollment. And so, it's not based on more open enrolled students leaving than coming in. We actually had a zero increase. We actually won less this year than we were last year. And so, that's not the reason for the decline. We just don't have as many kids coming through the system. And then, also, those diagonals are a concern. We have to figure out why those diagonals are not here this year and they were last year. But for the most part, it truly is based on, most people have two kids, one kid, three kids. They have other options, and so, it just is, you know, there are some outliers. If you go to, is it Sun Prairie? Sun Prairie is going like this, but most districts are not.
Any more questions, discussion on this? I have a feeling this won't be the last time we talk about this, so. I appreciate the information, and as the September count, isn't there another count later on in the year? And Laura's shaking her head. What, when does that count? Second Friday in January. So, my question is, is this safe somewhere, easy to update and easy to, as we go through that next count and the next school year and so forth?
Typically, the January count is less than the September count. And so, I'm not saying it's significantly less, but there is a drop-off in January as opposed to September. But when we do the third Friday in January count, we'll share that information as well.
Great. There's no more questions? We'll move on to our next item, which is the first reading of several different policies. And so, Laura, I'll let you introduce the policies, and this is just first-reading informational purposes tonight. And if there's any questions, we'll certainly talk about them.
So, we had a policy committee meeting on October 3rd. Yep, October 3rd. And during that meeting, all of these policies were discussed. They may have been discussed at a previous meeting as well, but they were prepared and the policy committee felt comfortable bringing them forward for a first reading. The first three policies that were discussed are in the 200 series, which is administration. And that area of our policies is with, in regard to administration. So, there are some changes to each of those policies. The first one is the administrative operations. It's about outside employment. And so, we have a proposed change to the title. And then, the language that is proposed for this policy is in agreement with the language in our handbook. Dan, is there anything else you want to add?
Yeah, so, we really had a handbook that was different than the policy, and we really wanted to have them on the same page. And so, what this one does is it makes it, you know, a good policy across the board that you can't have outside employment that interferes with your work. You can't use any resources, but it also doesn't require the superintendent to OK someone working in the summer months to do something else, or a weekend or whatever the case might be.
Are there any questions about policy 222.3?
Laura, just one thing to add, is when we see major changes or even when we don't, this one really went to our handbook, but many of the changes that you're going to see follow the recommendation from WASB. And so, that when we look at the policies, we truly went to WASB as the owner of many of these policies.
All right, so, looking at policy 225.1, it is administrative staff evaluation. We switched some of the language to be consistent with our language throughout our policies. So, it reads superintendent instead of district administrator. But at the policy committee, we felt that the shift in the last paragraph was enough to bring that forward for a first reading rather than a fast track. So, as you look at the language with regard to the evaluation, do you have any questions about that?
I think in the last paragraph, I know we had talked about maybe just like a kind of a minor typo fix because it reads, "An evaluation written or electronic report shall be prepared." And we're maybe going to switch that around a little bit, so maybe when we see that next time, we'll take a look at it. Just a little tweak there. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the next one.
The next one is the person in charge. And again, this policy has been in place. The original one was adopted in '71. We do have some slight tweaks to that policy as well, but enough to bring it forward for a first reading rather than a fast track. And the significant change is in the second paragraph, just to state that the administrator in charge shall notify their immediate supervisor of the person in charge when they're absent from their area. Rather, so, the principals are not directly supervised by the superintendent, and this, they will notify their immediate supervisor. That language just covers everybody. Questions there?
Okay. Very good.
So, the next policy is our controversial, controversial issues policy. We had a policy in place, and again, the last time that was revised was in 2013, originally adopted in 1972. We are proposing to really go with the WASB version of the controversial issues policy. So, the first one that you see is our district policy as is, and you'll see the strike-throughs on there. On the second page, underneath where the words, the last words revised in '07 and 2013 are struck through, begins the WASB policy. And again, we had some discussion about this at the policy committee, and the members of the policy committee felt it was appropriate to bring forward for a first reading and discussion here.
I know the policy committee spent a long time on these policies, so. If there's not a lot of questions tonight, or I'm sure were a lot of questions during our policy meetings, so.
Absolutely. And I'll just reiterate, this is one, again, that you mentioned follows WASB, and the thought was, it looked very, very well reasoned. And then, also, correct me if I'm wrong, but if they would see it, if they would deem it worthy of an amendment or a change, we'd get a signal on that during the year, correct?
Correct.
And that was another reason I think this is attractive because if they find something, we would know about it, we could act on it. So, they're basically our watchdog if we adopt their policies.
Correct. Because having that feed in that some language is being revised in one of their policies that we've adopted is really helpful. Keeps us responding to changes in statute or regulations more rapidly. Brings it to the forefront for us. The general practice is pretty consistent. It, some of the language is a little more modernized in the WASB version. I think that's one of the discussions we've had. There are no questions. We'll go on to the next one.
Okay.
All right. So, the next one is 333. And again, district programs and activities. The front one is the WASB, I'm sorry, the front one is our district policy. And then, starting on page three, you will see the WASB recommended policy, and we are recommending that we go with that. Again, you'll see some language is consistent. The flow of, I think what we had done previously is we adopted some language from WASB, but not all. And that impacted- And that impacted the flow of the policy. I, as we discussed at policy committee, it, parents opting out of surveys versus parents opting into surveys, that language remains. And it, so it holds the values that have been expressed in the community about that. But again, it brings it back together in a, in a very clear manner. Any questions on 333 at this time? We're going on to 335. So our current title for the policy is development and sale of curriculum materials. We are proposing to put the heading of intellectual property, development of curriculum materials, in here. This, again, you can see our language, strike through insertions of WASB language with regard to the development of curriculum materials. Essentially, it says that if the curriculum materials are developed in the course of your job, or utilizing district resources, the district retains property rights on that. If you were doing it outside on your own, entirely absent of district materials, then you retain rights. It also addresses independent contractor work within the system as well. Are there any questions about 335, intellectual property and sale of curriculum materials?
Laura, remind me, I think this does, this does not affect students' rights. Is that true? This this applies to employees and independent contractors?
Correct.
Thanks.
Okay.
All right. 341.1 is our basic instructional program, and is the section header. The title of it is the K-12 reading program. It's really a philosophical policy. So as a district, we had put our, our district philosophy in place, and much of that remains. We have revised some of the goals for the reading program. And again, we did revert and consult the WASB policy. So while we retained much of the district philosophy, we did utilize the WASB resources and consider that along with our district goals in developing the second page and the, with regard to the goals for the reading program. Any questions on that? So being that there were no questions this time, at the next board meeting, they'll come for second reading. And at that time, if we have a full board, we could vote on approving the changes or not approving the changes. All right. Ready for the next agenda item?
We are.
Awesome. So the next agenda item is the deletion of board policy 322. Previously, when we were looking at 321.1, nope, just 321, excuse me, about the school year at the, and we were on the second reading, you approved that policy after the second reading. At that time, Nancy, when you said, there's two of them, this is the one I thought you were referring to?
Nope, I was totally on the wrong page.
This policy is no longer necessary, because it is subsumed into the 321 policy, which covers the school year and the school hours. So based on that, the recommendation that was brought to policy committee and discussed there is to eliminate this policy. Any questions about that?
Great.
So that will come back at the next.
Those will all come back. You bet.
All right. So the next item is mine as well. If you recall, those of you who have been on the board for a little while have done it each year, you've approved course overview documents in August of each year. This year, we substitute, we had that, it was not listed specifically as the course overview documents, they were part of the curriculum plan. And so course overviews are approved by you, the board, annually. If we make changes to those, then, to the board-approved overview, we are bringing, we would bring those forward. So this is in regards to seventh grade social studies. We are proposing changes to the course overview documents. The document you have attached represents the changes that would be brought forward. Explicitly, the changes are with the unit descriptions and the unit titles. The unit descriptions that are listed have a more clear approach to what is actually the learning outcomes of the units, what the understandings the students are gaining from those units are. The, it's different than what was in the past. The instruction hasn't changed, but the communication outward has.
Just a real quick comment. This truly isn't changing what we're teaching in big history, in seventh grade social studies, but it really does do a much better job of of spelling out what's being taught than the last one did. And so we, Laura and I had conversations earlier, someone had asked the question, can we make it, can we make some of those changes? We said, we really can't make the changes unless we bring them back to you. But if we do that, let's bring them back and make it as accurate as we possibly can. So it really doesn't impact our curriculum, it just does a better job of identifying what's being taught in the, in our course overview.
The course overviews, if you recall, are accessible to the public as well, from our website.
Okay.
No questions at this time? Unless you're still thinking? Otherwise, we will bring that back at our next board meeting for vote.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Our next item for tonight is to set a date to review and discuss the findings of the Westman School District Private Task Force, which we heard from a week or two ago. And just chatting with Superintendent Cokerguard about this topic, we felt like it kind of warrants its own committee of a whole meeting. I was just opening our calendar for November, we have a regular school board meeting on November 2nd, and then we have a regular, excuse me, on November 4th, thank you, and another one, a committee of the whole on November 18th. But on November 18th, that committee of the whole meeting, we already have four different topics on the agenda.
So we looked today at cabinets. The topics that are on the agenda are going to take less than an hour. Okay? I'm not saying that they're going to, they might take a half hour, but I would plan on about an hour for that discussion. And so that if we go on the 18th, then we would plan on 6:30 till 8:00 to discuss the findings of the committee of the whole, I mean, of the task force, as well as anything else that you want us to discuss at that point in time. And so, so whether it's the 18th, or whether it's a different date, that's up to you. I would ask that you, between now and the time that we have that meeting, let us know what information that you need. Okay? I visited with Dave and Tim today, and I see, and I know one of the things we're going to want to look at is, what are the cost of of running the different schools? What is the maintenance budget at at Fair Park? What's the cost of doing things at Green Tree? And so we know that we're going to bring that information. I'm not going to give you the same enrollment information I gave you tonight, but I'll try to get you some of those diagonal information, some of the things that, you know, why did we lose 100 kids who were in the system last year that aren't back this year? What was the rationale for going? Did they just move to Milwaukee or someplace else, or where are they at? And so we'll try to get you as much information as you can. It's just the beginning of of several sessions that you are going to have to have to decide where are we at, and how do we want to get there? And so, but your call as to whether you want a separate meeting in November, or whether you want the second half of the committee of the whole, but plan on about a two-hour meeting of the committee of the whole. The first 45 minutes to an hour would be things that we currently have on the agenda. Other ones would be strictly on the findings of the the task force and any other information you want.
How do you want? I certainly have a list of all the things that I want for that meeting already started. So you prefer that via email? You want me to start spewing that off now?
Well, you know, I think it would be easier if you sent it to me or gave it to me. That way, everybody can, and I'm guessing what you're going to ask for, Kurt is going to ask for some of those same things, and Aaron's going to ask, you know, so many of the things will be the same, but that way, we can get a master list and try to, if we can't get them all on the agenda for the 18th, then maybe the second meeting is the early December, or a time in December, we're going to have the second half of it. But we'll, we'll try to get all of those items on the agenda that you need, so that you can make good discussion, informed decisions as we go forward.
I think. Don, is it the plan to have maybe the steering committee portion of the task force present along with Zimmerman as well, or is this for us to ask questions of district leadership directly?
You know, that is your call. I was not assuming, but I don't know if we need to have the task force back again or not. That's up to you. Okay? If you want to have a member or two from the task force to come and ask questions, you can. The information that they received is the same information that I'm going to give you based on, this is what Tim sent them, this is what Dave sent them, and we go from there. That's totally your call. You're, you're in charge of that portion. So if you want them back, you can ask as many of them to come back as you would like, or you can figure out what information we have and can give you. And then if we can't answer those questions, then maybe the following meeting, we'd want to bring some of those gentlemen back. But that's up to you.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll throw my hat in and say I like the idea of having it combined on November 18th.
I think we can have a pretty good meeting on the 18th with an hour, hour and a half discussion in. And I don't know if we want to go much more than that either, but that's up to you.
I will not, I have a procedure that day that I will not be able to attend or call in. So I'm just, I can, if it's that day, I can voice my questions ahead of time. But I'm just letting the board know about that day for me.
Yep. If you get the questions ahead of time, we'll, we'll record the the presentation, we'll take notes, and we'll try to answer your questions, just like everybody else's questions, whether you can or can't be here or not. That's it.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that? On the 18th, we'll start at 5:30, and hopefully get through the topics you've got listed here fairly quickly, 45 minutes.
Yep.
And then have time for our task force discussion.
I guess my only comment to that is, I think Kurt brings a lot of value for a lot of the comments that they're going to have, that I'll be a little sad if we miss his commentary about some of the lighting updates and those kind of things in person. I mean, it's one thing for him to get you his questions, but it's another for the rest of us to glean his knowledge during the meeting. So I, I would be more apt to ask if we could push it to a date that we could all physically be there. I just think it's super important, personally.
That would, certainly, that's fine with me. If, if not, we'll try to make sure and have certain questions, and I'll do, I'll work with Kurt before he leaves, make sure that we have certain, because there's no question, this is not a one-meeting discussion. This is the first of several meetings, not necessarily just about the task force information, but about where we're at. We've got some big decisions that we have to make. The enrollment numbers that I gave you are not, they're not pie in the sky. That's reality. That's just where we're at, and so we have to to make some adjustments accordingly. And so I know that this is not a one-meeting type discussion, this is many meetings. And so Kurt certainly will bring to the table of some questioning that maybe no one else will. And so we want to make sure that we have Kurt at the table, whether it's at the first one, the third one, that, that's your call.
Can I ask you, Kurt, are you off that whole week?
Just that day. I'll be, I got a procedure that day, and I'll be out of pocket, I will be back the next day, in the next week. So I'm back November 19th through the end of the month.
Because the, the following week is Thanksgiving week, and I'm gone that whole week.
What about November 11th? It's a Monday.
Does that matter to anyone?
So actually, even, I, I'm in Houston from November 14th to the 18th.
Okay.
And I have five days of procedures, and then I will be back on the 19th.
I mean, an option could be on Monday, November 11th.
Kurt, did you say November 14th or November 4th?
You said 14th.
You said 14th through the 18th, that you would be.
See, I'm physically in Houston. I could call in on, I couldn't call in on the night of the 18th, but I could call in on the night of the 11th. But it would be remote.
I wouldn't call in on the 11th. That's getting even worse. I mean, I just feel like, you know, there's just, I mean, if I ask a question, you know, that might spark another question for you or for you. Like, I just feel like it's really important that we all have. Does it have to be on Monday?
Well, you know, so if we have the meeting of, on the 18th, and I don't want to rush you back ready, you're just going through some procedures, and I don't know if you're going to be ready, but, but there's not anything on the 19th, 20th, 20th, I mean, we have a variety of days that week where we could have a second meeting. And I'm not suggesting that you have a second meeting, but we've, we've got the first one scheduled for the 18th. And what, you know, if, if there's no other things on the agenda, we'll expand that agenda a little bit, so that I'm not bringing you in for a half hour. We'll try to have an hour, hour and a half's worth of stuff on the 18th, but it will not have anything to do with the, that task force findings. And so if you want to do another time that week for a second meeting, we could do that as well. That's, you guys have to look at your calendars. I'm telling you that I can make any time that week work.
That works with me. Again, maybe the, I would love to be at the meeting. I do have maybe opinions on the, on the matter, so I could make the rest of the days that week.
And what'll come the 19th and 20th?
How about the 21st? Is, uh, 21st is a Thursday, it's a week before Thanksgiving.
And that's heading into deer hunting, opening weekend of deer hunting. 21st could potentially be.
Does deer hunting start the 21st or the 22nd?
23rd.
23rd.
Okay.
I have parent-teacher conferences on the 21st. And I got to take a book back to the library that day. Get a haircut.
Okay. So I mean, is this a big crisis if we don't meet until December 2nd, 3rd, 4th? I mean, I don't know that two weeks is really, it might give you more time to gather my 4,000 pieces of information that I'm going to request, so.
Yeah. And so I don't know if there's, there's not anything in November that has to be November, it can certainly be December. I guess one of the things that the board, and I believe the answer is evident, but it hasn't been talked about, that a possible referendum is either in April, or November, or past November. And so that if you were thinking about doing something in April, and I don't know if there's any desire for that to happen, because I don't think, we might not be ready for that, but that's your call, then you have to make that decision December, January, and so that we, we need to just get the process rolling. If there's not anything that's going to be on the ballot in April, then it's not as time-sensitive.
We're having the meeting on November 18th anyway, and we're going to have six out of seven of us there. I'd like to just start talking about it, asking questions and talking amongst ourselves. But then I'd also like to schedule something on December 2nd, as another committee of a whole with the task force as a topic again, and, not the task force, but the facilities and, you know, like you said, Don, where are we going, and that sort of thing. I think we're going to have a lot of meetings on this topic in the next handful of months.
I think it's better to have more than fewer.
Can everybody make Monday, the second work?
December second? Yeah?
Okay, and so, I'll, we'll try to, you, then you have a little more time to come up with a thousand and three questions rather than just a thousand, Nancy, and so.
Do we want the facilities as a topic on the eighteenth as well, or not?
Yeah, that's up to you. Do you want to just start with facilities on in December and not in November? Gives us a little bit more time to get your questions in, or we can, you know, obviously can't, it's a committee of the whole, so you're not going to make any decisions. If you would like to talk about referendum, you can have those kind of things to find out where everybody's at on possible referendum dates, if that's even a topic at this point in time, and then put it on the agenda for our December meeting. So, what are your thoughts on for that meeting, committee of the whole in November?
My thought is, if we start November eighteenth, there's going to be a lot of information you're going to be providing, and I wouldn't, I'd hate to delay that at a minimum. I mean, I think it would be good to at least start the information exchange and, and the questions. How deep we get into discussion, I guess is up to us, but I'd like to at least start the conversation then.
So, so we'll plan on that original format that we talked about. First forty-five minutes to an hour will be the regular committee of the whole, no action taken. The second part of that will be the, the start of the discussion, and we're going to, if there's any questions that, that, more than just us presenting information to you, then we'll hold off and do that in December because we want all seven board members here if possible.
Sound good? Okay with that, Kurt?
Yeah.
Okay. Great, is Jen Kinnerman still awake? You're up next. Or maybe Don has taken this. Okay, sorry, Jen, you can go back to sleep.
Let's see here. Tim, where am I at?
Twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year calendar.
Come on, there it is, it's going to be a quiet year that year.
I'm glad that I had to keep the complaints from me.
There you go, there you go. So, okay. And so, not really even a discussion, because we haven't taken this to the, any teachers had any input from our staff, okay? But last year, we spent quite a bit of time, and it really was a direction that we, we really want to start school that first day in September that we can. And we want to be done by the last Friday, the first Friday in June, okay, with graduation the following Sunday. And so, if that's still the interest of the board, then we're going to get some information from our faculty as to what ones are going to look at, but there's not a lot of options, okay? Because we, we still have a number of student days that we have to put in, we have our hours, and so that, for the most part, we'll finish school on that Friday, the third of, of June, and we'll start school on Monday, or, excuse me, Wednesday, the, the first of September. And so when we look at that, there's really only a couple different options, and we'll try to get input from the, from the faculty. One option is to have school and, no in-service school for kids and teachers on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, because I have to have a day. Or the other option would be to have in-service on Martin Luther King Day, but, but teachers would be here, okay? In the past, that's what we have done, this year, we changed that for next year, and so, you know, we'll have a day on Martin Luther King Day as a holiday, and then that Tuesday is a in-service day. In order for us to get that day back somewhere along the line, I need to, to get it, and that might be Martin Luther King Day. So those really are the only two options that I can see when we look at the calendar. And like I said, I'm not, I'm not asking you for input as to which one you think is more appropriate or not, I'll get that from the staff. My real question is, if the board is still committed to being done on that Friday, so that we can have graduation on that following Sunday, then I, that becomes the marching orders, and so we don't need to spend hours coming up with different calendars, because there really is only a couple different options. Is that okay? Everybody still on board with being done with that, no later than that Friday and graduation, no later than that Sunday?
You look like you want to say something.
Nancy's fine. Nancy's totally fine with that. I, I just don't think you want to push graduation that late.
No, that's fine, I think, and you guys brought it up last year, and as, our, our teachers felt the same way when we got their input, and so, but like I said, I, I don't want to have a committee come up with forty-seven different options, and those options are anywhere from, you know, June fourth to June fifteenth, if we truly are going to be done on that, on that, that Friday, we're going to limit those options. Okay, so we'll bring back a calendar at a different point in time.
Sounds good. All right, Mr. Zogard.
All right, Policy Committee. So, Policy Committee met twice, once on October third and once on October fourteenth, and between the two, we talked about eleven different policies. And rather than talk about all eleven in great detail, I think I can summarize it because, thanks to Laura, eight of those eleven, we talked about tonight, so I'm not going to revisit that. There are three more that will be coming to a future meeting, and they're all about deletions, three policies that either are, we believe, no longer relevant, or are going to be assumed within another policy, and so those three will come at the November fourth regular meeting. And it's three forty-one thirty-three district wellness, three forty-one point three virtual program, and three forty-one eleven reading program evaluation. Again, we think all those will be worthy of deletion, but that'll be for the board's consideration on November fourth. That concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Superintendent Kierkegaard?
Just a couple of quick ones, Dave Ross was working on boilers tonight over at Fair Park, and that's why he's not here, but he just called me and I didn't answer, but he said, we're having, so we're good to go for tomorrow. So we've got things lined up, so we're, we're good to go. We were a little nervous as to what was going to happen with the boiler, but we found where the leak was at, so we're, we're good to go. Just a couple of quick comments, one is, the United Way Drive is just finishing up campaign, and so we had Dave, Ralph, and John, we're all three very active, as well all of our administrators in the whole project. We know that it's a very worthwhile program, and so that's just acting, or wrapping up on Friday. I think you all received an invite from Scott Mendel regarding the Veterans Day Program. It really should be an outstanding program, and, and I, if you have an opportunity to attend, it will be a real treat for us to not only recognize and honor our veterans in our community, but also to listen to the US Army, or watch the US Army drill team. And so, if you get a chance to participate, that'd be great. And then the last one I have is that, just a reminder that the gala is on Saturday, so we'll see you there.
Maybe, if not Don, maybe someone else, anybody in the audience chime in. I think we have some, some of our athletes are going to state, or at least they're advancing into regionals, maybe you could just announce that.
I do, I don't have them right. Nancy, you're out there, who's, do you have the information available as to, I know our West volleyball team is going to regional, tell me who else is.
It's Thursday.
And we'll have those students come to one of our board meetings so that we can recognize them in the not-too-distant future as well. I don't know who else was there, I mean, I don't.
No, I don't think there's any other, I was just going to note that, I believe there was some district communication on Facebook today that stated there'd be a fan bus for students looking to go up to Final Act to watch the girls. It's been a long time since we've been this far in, in volleyball, so those watching at home, if your kids come home and say, hey, there's a great fan bus and fun activity for me on Thursday, it's true, let them go, so.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, best of luck to all of our athletes. On our board calendar, as Don mentioned, on Saturday is the gala for, it's the West Bend Foundation Annual Gala, this is their biggest fundraiser of the year. I've had the privilege of being on the board for the foundation this year, and there's a lot of planning that goes into this gala. I've been to the gala before and it's fantastic. Auction items are now live, the silent auction items, and so if you need a link to that website, I think it's been posted, and I'm sure it'll be posted several more times this week, even if you can't attend the gala, you can get online and, and participate in the silent auction. We've got our regular board meeting in November, on November fourth, we've got a committee of a whole meeting on November eighteenth, another committee of a whole on December second, and then our December board meeting on December ninth. Have I missed anything, any other items for follow-up discussion? Paul, we are now going to adjourn into executive session, and unfortunately, you cannot participate in that, being on the phone, okay? But I appreciate you calling in. So I will move to enter into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight-five-one C, to consider employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and take any such action if necessary based on its discussion, namely, review and potential action to approve the closed session minutes of August twelfth, twenty nineteen, staff compensation and personnel.
Second.
Motion and a second by Chris on that, let's not forget, it's me and Chris made the motion, you're taking the minutes. And all in favor, and we'll start with Paul.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, great, we're now in closed session, and we'll do that upstairs, and I am going to take a quick break.